Okay, uh, we need to approve more than the agenda.
A motion to approve?
Jessica made a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And you have a couple of comments?
Okay.
Okay, and we need to approve the consent agenda that permits the bills, the sublists, and the MSBA. I do have a question on that. We need a motion first, right? Don't we? Someone have to make the motion?
Yep.
And the second?
My second.
Okay, um, so I looked over that. And are there any changes or is that just something, is that something new we have to do that on that policy?
All of it, yeah, on thi- what this is on the full maintenance agreement, it's just pretty much we're using MSBA as our policymaker.
Okay.
That's what that is. We in a, we kind of, we were digging through old ones, we're like, what is that like? I have no idea what it is, and then we look back and that's what it is. It's pretty much just saying.
I looked through it, that's what I, I did. Okay. All right. Does anyone else have questions? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Seven oh. And program evaluation, maintenance building.
Sorry, mid-drink. Okay, uh, I kind of went over last year's and just kind of edited last year's that Ron did. There's still a lot of things that are on, were on last year's that are still needed for this year, of course. Uh, roofs are always going to be, need to be monitored and stuff, like the roof at Triway got shingled in the week, in the weekend on the fifth grade hallway and the shed and then the trailer and stuff. And of course, we're going to always have HVAC units that need to be replaced and stuff. The safe rooms, of course, the upcoming safe room projects, you know, we're waiting on all that to transpire and take place. Uh, we're also waiting on the RIB grant approval with the city of Granby to hopefully get rid of, stop using the lagoon. And, uh, of course, we're maintaining the buildings, you know, and of course, the rock building's always going to have issues and, you know, and our buildings are starting to show some age, you know, really show their age, but other than that, they're in decent shape. Uh, I also put on here, uh, the solar systems, okay, we need to maintain those. The field house is still not working. I've got them, uh, on that project right now. They're ordering the replacement panel. It got hit with the baseball, got damaged. They'll be here to try and figure out what else is wrong with that system to get it up and running. The bleachers need to be addressed at Granby because if you don't, if you do not get the bleachers inside, uh, in square, they'll fall out of track and then the guys got to go over there with pry bars and stuff because the bearings of the tracks are going out on those bleachers. We need to think about doing something with that. Getting the concrete, uh, landing, uh, for the football field to get it ADA compliant. There's supposed to be a concrete landing at each, each handicap ramp and we currently do not have that. So that's something that we need to consider doing in the near future. Uh, there's also one, uh, ongoing project on here on the list that says heaters for the locker rooms at the high school. That's been done. Me and my guys, we found some old parts and pieces and, uh, well, found the initial problem and then just replaced what we need and we got all the heaters working in the locker rooms now. So now they're not freezing.
That was without putting many splits in or?
We did not put anything in. I bought a motor, that's all. I had to buy a blower motor. Other than that, everything else was used parts that we had off old units.
They did a lot of really good work over there in the locker room to really improve the, the whole situation. They were able to also, sorry to jump in here.
Oh, you're fine.
With the, uh, the washer and dryer, that dryer was venting out into that locker room and creating some serious beldue and they were able to get a lot of it cleaned up and taken care of.
Yeah, we also replonked the, uh, washing machine and the ice machine drains. It was dumping into the shower, uh, and the basketball team was going in there at 6:00 AM having practice and then showering before the day, before school started and, uh, dumping detergent, you know, and stuff like that in the shower, in the shower floor was not a good thing. Uh, boys started having some foot issues, so we put in a septic pump and a container and we're pumping it to a vent. So it's taken care of, should not have any issues at this point. So that is taken care of. But on the back of the, uh, the report, you can see all the completed projects that happened over the summer and that's what we have done to date. So, do, anybody got any questions on that?
Well, Duncan Scott, uh, do you, where are we going to work on the, the landing of the football field? To get that ADA compliant?
Yeah, I mean, whatever that entails, I mean, we can try to get that done.
I was hoping to do it this summer. That's one of the projects I was wanting to do this summer, but we're going to have to, you know, dig, dig it out, rebar it, compact it, it's just.
How much of an area are you, are we talking?
Just enough for a landing. On the, let me think here, on my directions, on this side, we're going to have to probably make a sidewalk underneath the stadium, underneath the bleachers to get to the, uh, yeah, to get to the concession stands and the restrooms for a wheelchair.
Yeah.
You know, so that's something to think about, you know?
When you study something, definitely.
Oh, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's things you push, because you could like, you know, we do that right now, but to be compliant, yeah, we'll get that done. And it might be inefficient anyway, so we'll probably try to get that done, I would probably say this summer, as quick as we can. I'd say we could try, try to get it done when the weather gets warm, right, so we'll just get, we're able to get it done right then.
Other than that, I mean.
Get a hold of Zane.
Well, we, we need to get fixed before the track.
Well, that's, that's what I was saying is, you know, or baseball.
Baseball.
Baseball probably wouldn't be so bad, but track.
Track.
Yeah, yeah. So we could try to see what, what we could try to get done before our, our first home meets, which are usually in, I think, April. So we might be able to depend on what weather's like, see if we can get something done now and get past Zane and see what that would entail.
Just keep us updated on what you, what we get done, maybe.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Let's see, so next, uh, who wants to do individual or all together?
Uh, well, yeah, we'll, we'll approve them all together.
Okay. Safety program.
Yes, um, I'm going to do the safety program this year, and I apologize with my voice. I've been under the weather a little bit, so it sounds like I'm talking in a tunnel. It feels like it. In, in regards to the safety report, I did use what we had last year and updated it and made sure that all the things that were held accountable for, that we've, we've done those things. So I'm just going to kind of hit on some highlights, um, as far as the data to be collected. I hope everybody had an opportunity to take a look at it, but, um, if you haven't, just a couple of things with the safety program, I'm sure glad we do these every year. That way it kind of refreshes us right here in the middle of the year to think about some things. Rob and his crew have done a walk around on the perimeter of the facility to make sure that everything is up to par, looked at some playground equipment and looked at a lot of different things just to make sure that we have things as safe as we possibly can, even though they do a great job, all of our staff does a great job of keeping their eye out for trying to see anything that, uh, obviously could hurt or harm someone. Sometimes accidents still happen. We had a little kid jump up and cut his finger last week and had seven stitches cut it to the bone on, on a, uh, on a weird little, uh, panel cover for an electrical box. It was kind of an odd deal and we've, we've looked at that and get that taken care of as well, so. Uh, but the biggest thing is, I also addressed this with the administrators last week is, you know, continuing, continuing to encourage our teachers to keep their eyes out for anything that needs to be addressed. So we've done the playground equipment, emergency drills. I sit down with Rob and we talk about a lot of these different things. Um, our building principals always have emergency drill schedules and they schedule those in throughout the year to ensure we're compliant there and to make sure that that's taken care of. And, and Rob's got fire extinguishers and the inspection of the fire alarms to make sure all those safety things are, uh, up to date. Both Rob, I, and Mr. Charlton are also getting to know a little bit about our asbestos reports a little bit. We're beginning to dig into those a little bit, uh, for, for multiple different reasons, but, uh, we're able to keep up on those.
Where, where do we have asbestos?
Those are at each individual building and like Mr. Charlton said, they're about that thick. They're, they're.
You're talking about where the, where does asbestos at? If you're in the fifth and sixth, or the fifth grade hall at Triway, all the tile is asbestos. And then there is some up in the ceilings, um, which we're all fine with because it's not flaking out or anything, so you're allowed to keep it there. At Granby, all of the kindergarten, first grade hallways, all that tile is, and then also in the computer labs where the old, uh, library used to be, all that tile is asbestos. And then up in the ceilings, it's sprayed around the girders asbestos as well. And then everything that's down in the basement of the rock building, so we got, we got to be, yeah.
But all that is, is up to par, the, the tile is sealed and it's safe. And then the ceiling is, is sealed and safe as well. The reason why we're digging into that is working with Bergey and if there's a remodel that takes place a little bit there at Granby, then we have to get into that. So we're just kind of digging into that and making sure we know what we have and what we need to address if it need be. Um, the two thousand, or, uh, $200,000 safety grant that was, that was, uh, that was all from last year. You can see where all that money was spent. As far as the concerns, and, and these are just things that were brought up last year and some things that you're currently looking at, the FEMA safe rooms or tornado shelters at all campuses, that was also built and by the community into the MSEP and CSEP goals. And so that was something that the community through that process said that they were very interested in. And as far as the actions recommended, we know that you as a board are discussing those proposed safe rooms for 24, 25. School resource officers, anytime that we have an opportunity to look at maybe adding those, it's something that we can always look at. Last year CPR certified staff was brought up and we didn't have enough CPR certified staff in the buildings and we were able to address that. Actually, last Monday when we had our, our PD, we were able to get 21 new staff CPR trained. And they were trained, there's, there's CPR trained and then there's CPR trained. I know that sounds silly, but there, there's some CPR training and certifications that you can get over the internet that really are not very hands-on and it's tough to really know kind of what you're getting there. But, uh, we did hire Newton County to come in and they did a training, an AM and a PM and we got teachers in all buildings now that are certified. And we're going to probably try to keep that up every single year because those certifications will, uh, expire in two years, so we'll keep that happening going. And then grant opportunities, where Scott and I are both always looking for those that, when they arise, uh, if there's a grant opportunity to take advantage of that to improve safety. Is there any questions in regards to the safety report?
One thing, and I can't remember where the, if it was that last meeting, somebody was wanting Triway to, uh, put fencing around the, what's, the old ball field.
Okay.
With its, well.
I think that was brought up in your, um, what was the committee?
It was the TAC.
TAC committee.
Okay. So are we looking into that at all or?
I mean, it's cer- certainly something we can explore, it's just, um, it's just going to be a lot. I mean, that's a big area and everything, so I mean, we could, we could look at that or, or, or look at maybe just doing a, a section of it and then maybe, you know, getting a, a corner piece done and then if we can afford more, then.
A little bit more.
Exactly. It's like X, like I said, that, that area's a big one, but I mean, it's also a, you know, understandable why it would want to be fenced in.
Wouldn't you be able to park in it still though because for all of the activities?
That was the one thing they said, they knew that, wouldn't they?
Yeah, I mean, you'd probably have to cut out some, you, you wouldn't be able to go all the way up to the road. You'd probably have to, where those parking blocks are, that's probably where you'd, you know, that's now your, you know, your outer limit right there and go across that way. So you'd probably lose a little bit of space, but I mean, I don't think you need the 50 feet that's right there next to the road anyway, you know? So I mean, that could just be squared off and done that way.
And it depends on what you're trying to accomplish too with the fence. I mean, are you trying to make sure that kids stay in type scenario where you are?
Yeah, that's probably what I think, wasn't it? They were concerned about keeping people out.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that was one of them, but.
And, um, you know, no matter what, with an open.
Just say.
Gate type scenario, people can come in and out, but, you know, it, once again, it comes down to what are you trying to accomplish? If it's more of a cable scenario, kind of like what we have here, to keep people from just driving in and out of that location, or, you know, you, you reinforce that where if a car was to drive off the highway versus say, maybe it was to, those cables were to catch a tight mentality, it just, you have to look at what you're trying to accomplish with that, so. Um, any more questions on safety report?
Good.
Think you're going to go and take the.
I will jump into that if it's okay.
Sure.
Really great news to report on APR, which is our annual performance report. In, in a nutshell, it is our, our grade card. I know last month I hit on it and I was kind of excited to be able to report that to you this month is the fact that you're, you're going to evaluate, if you click on the first one, I think I've got uploaded, it just says basically APR district data, I believe, is what that one might have been that labeled. It gives you a three years, uh, look, two years of growth with three years worth of data, and we've slowly grown for the last two consecutive years. So you're going to see three years of data there. You know, at the end of the day, we're always looking for growth, um, and if we grow two or three percentage points, that's, that's great, that's growth. We obviously would like for more than that. This year we grew four and a, 4.7% from last year to this year, and that's a big jump. And that's, that's, yes, I would like to think in a couple of years we would be in the eighties, and I think we can really accomplish that if we can continue to work hard. I think that's an attainable goal, so we'll continue to work hard for that. So very proud of our teachers and our kids there. That is, that is their boots in the ground, on the ground type mentality that are getting that done. Um, and, and just so you know, when you look at the APR, you're seeing performance and you're also seeing continuous improvement there on those charts. So the performance, they're gaining those numbers from our, uh, EOC scores and our MAP scores. And then the continuous improvement is still coming from those scores, but it's showing your growth from one year to the next. So that's where those percentage points come from. Like I, I might have mentioned to you in the past, that's a, that's a big algorithm that goes into that component of making that, uh, those numbers, and it does, it does get pretty confusing, so. But we are showing growth and that's very good. If you go to this next document, um, that it should look like this. It's got it break down, broken down, and that's the district wide. It kind of breaks it down into categories so that you're able to see where our growth is. Good news, once again, more good news, last year in 23 APR, we had, uh, five categories that were in the below average category. So if you look right here, you're going to see all these different categories. The best is on target, the second best is on track, then three is approaching, emerging, and then below average. And that's kind of how they're ranked. Obviously, the higher, the better you do, the higher you're going to do on that. You want as many on target, on track, and approaching as possible. But like I said, last year we had five below average and we had zero this year. So we had absolutely none below average and we only had a couple there that you see down there on the social studies piece that were emerging. All of the rest were on target, on track, and approaching. You can kind of see that it's not just that that goes into the APR when you get to this back page and you look at that also. We've done outstanding, if you look, we only got half of our points in attendance and we're constantly trying to work on our attendance. And that can, I've never, I'll be honest with you, I've never seen anybody get all their points for attendance, that's almost unheard of. So even if you get, um, if we were to move our average from a 92, 93 to a 94% average, we might get that third point, so, um, but every point does count. Is there any questions on the district APR? Questions, anything you see? I also threw in here, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time to keep moving, but the next document is MoDBT and that allows us, I did not show this to you last year, but that also allows you to see the growth in each category. Um, and this is what they kind of use as the, the determining factor for this APR growth. It just puts it in a graph form so that you can see it a little bit better. So if you ever have any questions in regards to that, after you get a chance to look at it, I will do the best I can to answer those questions. A special.
Can I ask you something?
Yes.
So does the little dot show the growth? Is that what that's showing?
Yes, and I hate to, you know, go back to Matt and the bubbles, um, you know, next month I can bubble you to death if you'd like.
Well, the bubbles work good.
Well, if you would like to see the bubbles again, I'll, I'll bring them back out because I will over Christmas break look at our, our growth from the beginning of the year to now. This growth is from last, two years ago, the EOCs and MAP, to last year's testing. Does that make sense? So it's a full year of testing, uh, that they're looking at. And yes, those dots, the further the right they are, the better they are. And yes, we are aware of some of those locations and our building principals are aware that those are some target areas that have to be improved, have to be.
Is that, uh, for, well, I guess that's.
So when you're looking at that.
That is elementary. So is that, does that combines Granby and Triway together, like the fourth grade?
This is, this is district wide, yes. This is a district wide report. But when you look at, look at that, it does break it down. Now, keep in mind, when it says fourth grade, fifth grade, that's last year's fourth grade, last year's fifth grade. So it's a, it's not this year's, it's last year's information. So, yes, any more questions on the MoDBT information?
Just our math is very good.
No, ma'am, our, our K-8 math is, um, needs to improve. I will tell you a highlight, I give credit where credit is due and I was, I'll be honest with you, I was under the weather last Tuesday and Mr. Charlton got to go down and talk to the Triway staff and, and praise them for their APR. It, it, it blew me out of the water. I was not prepared to see a growth of that nature in one year, but our Triway performance, our Triway APR, and I can give you a copy of that if you want to see it, went from 59.8% uh, two years ago to last year, they were at 83, or, this would be last year, 83.3. They jumped 24 percentage points, which I earlier said, if we see a three or four percent growth, that's good, and they jumped 24. So they did exceptionally well. I've asked them, you know, what did you guys do different? What can you attribute that to? And a lot of them are saying that they truly feel like they really dedicated to IXL for their, um, RTI, their extra additional support time, um, and got a lot, kids got a lot more practice. So they really feel like, um, that was a big contributing factor. And like I, I mentioned to some of them today, no pressure, keep that up next year as well, so. You know, when you, when you see that big of a growth, it's, that's great, but it's a little nerve wracking, like, oh my goodness, can we do that again, type mentality, so. But very, very proud, um, of all of our staff and our, and our kids. Even when you look at Granby's as well and the high school, the growth is there. It's very similar. The Triway's performance through their, their MAP testing, uh, was outstanding, was just really good. Any questions? And I, I sometimes feel like I throw too much data at you, but if you have any questions, feel free to holler at me and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last one's the fall athletic report. Mr. Ray can't be, couldn't be here because, uh, his son's wife went into labor at some point today and off he went. So there, I, there is either a baby now or if not now, well, she's, well, she's having a bad day. So hopefully it's already happened, so. But if you want to look at the fall athletic report, if anybody had any questions about anything, I'll try to answer anything you got. We just finished up the, uh, which, which grade level was it that we hosted? Seventh grade or eighth grade?
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade girls. We just hosted the conference tournament there, got that done. Went very well, had a pretty good crowd every night. And then I think coming up, is it the 27th? Our boys and girls are both playing in Southwest. I think it's the 27th, I think that's when they start, I think it's Friday, and I think that's when they'll start. Girls played 11 that morning and then I think the boys are at 4, so, if you want.
Now, was the big change changing in December? Something dropping out?
Yeah.
Does that happen yet?
It's already, that's already done. Hollister, Reed Spring, Marshfield, all, all the Springfield away, so it's pretty much back to what we were originally with the addition of McDonald County in a way. So, yeah.
Okay, we need a, we need to approve the program evaluation. Motion. Rebecca seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? Right, you're true.
All right, so here we are in December. These numbers, this is our enrollment right now, these are pretty much from our last board meeting to yesterday. So, um, again, first number, that's everybody, you know, with, you know, PKs, everybody, and then the last number is this is the, the people that we're getting paid for. So 556 at Granby, Triway's at 406, and high school's at 441. So, you know, relatively static for the most part. So we're ending with about 1402, so we're still at above 1,400. Our, um, percentages, like Seth was just saying, you know, trying to keep those attendance percentages up, um, we're right now at 91.16. You guys kind of asked that one time, you know, what's it like on our Mondays when we have, it's done it. Yeah, I think we're usually averaging, um, even, even Triway, Triway's usually, you know, they usually have the highest one, and I think they're right at about 89. So I mean, that's, we're, we're looking at about 88% average for the entire district on those, on those Mondays when we, when we have school. Sometimes that's unavoidable, but, you know, we do want.
Well, just kind of like this week, we could have avoided, we could have just done our normal, went and not come on Monday and Friday, that would probably.
And I mean, and, and you're right.
That probably helped our attendance.
Yes, and, and that's something I had a, I had a calendar committee meeting, uh, before, before yesterday. And, you know, kind of talked to them about that, I think we kind of said the same thing. One thing is, you know, parents like the stability of, of when you're off and everything, but the other thing too is just our attendance is just.
Will you open up that calendar?
No, we won't do it till this morning.
Okay, good.
Most of them haven't sent it out yet. So, well, and I told them that, I said, when you're a four day week, you know, the calendar is, you're changing one day for another day, so don't worry, that's not too bad. Uh, cash flow, um, I, uh, for tax revenue, I think, uh, we are, about $680,000 came in over, um, over December from, from November to now. So, um, and that's not, you know, that does count, $600 worth of taxes that were in our rear, so this is all, all new money and everything. But our, our cash balance right here and our teacher fund, our revenues were up, um, on all those. Like I said, you know, before, it, it's kind of nice because I can remember it, it was August and you would be in the positive and then you'd be negative, 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 and you were trying to last till December when all your tax money came in. And we're, we've been fortunate to where we've, we've been in the positive except for one month, so that's good. That's what we had come in. Like I said, we had one negative month right there, which was in October, and even though that one's not a big number, it's still a positive number of the 54,000 that we have in, in surplus. Expenditures over revenues, and right now we're still, um, about a million bucks to the good. And again, most of that is due to, we're getting more funding per student, but I also had that 900 some odd thousand dollars of S R money that I got to do, and that, that was our last drawdown for that, so that's going to be our last big cash influx that we'll have to have. Teacher funds, um, right now, they're pretty close, honestly, on, you know, within, within, you know, a few thousand dollars, $21,000 difference between one year to the next. Of course, you're going to expect that because, you know, we get raises and everything else. Super close on, on fuel and everything, which I'm going to say, this is probably still better because gas prices have gone up and everything, so when we got our, our new provider, it's only a $21 difference even with more expensive fuel and everything. Our labor is way down, um, on that as are our supplies and everything because we haven't had to fix as many things, so that's good. And we're still $75,000 less in our capital projects than we were this time last year. We were, we were talking about the, the electric, um, you know, this month was about 18 grand. Well, that's, that's better than the 40, some odd thousand dollars of last month. We, we've been in contact with Liberty, um, our billing cycles and everything, they pretty much got us good this. They pretty much got us good this, this time. They did miss two meters at Gramby, which were big ones, you know, the rock building in our, in our three-phase. So that, that's going to be a significant amount of money that, that could have been added onto there. But for the most part, they've kind of got to where it needs, needs to be. Lori's still got a, a call into someone to make sure that we are getting all our billing done accurately in the month that it's happening, for multiple months. But even when you see this, you know, our, our year-to-date, we're still within, you know, a thousand dollars of where we should be. It's just, you know, I just wish we could have our, a stable bill instead of, you know, the roller coaster that we've got going. I have no clue why that is so much cheaper. I wish I did. One of these days, I'll understand the beauty of these bills. There's a cheap bill this time.
I think that's on next month.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, well, yeah, absolutely, well, yeah, I don't know. Oh, anybody have any questions about anything? Rob, do you have anything else you need to add?
Uh, just a couple things. Tomorrow, a meeting with the city about the storage container that we're going to be putting down at the softball field locations. We're probably going to have to do some, a little bit of dirt work with some gravel and stuff. Other than that, they're talking about adding one additional one for the city themselves down there, so, but that's not, not bad at all, so.
And I started to cut into you, Rob. What we're talking about here with, with softball playing down there, they take their equipment down. Well, they take it down the first time, then they were storing it down there. Well, they were, the place where they were storing it was the bathrooms. So I mean, they had it all in there, and the state didn't want them to do that anymore. So what we did was, we found some, like, like the one that's back here, the storage containers, but a half-size one that we could put down there, and now softball can have all their storage down there, and they don't have to cart everything back and forth.
Just like a twenty-foot connect or a thirty?
Yes, yes, twenty. Twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is more than enough for them. And then this building over here that's by the, um, wellhouse, is getting ready to fall down. One good gopher sneeze and gets a goner. And so we bought one for that as well, to get all that turf and everything out of there. We're just going to put it right over there by that peavy trailer that's back there right now. So that thing can finally breathe its last breath and go away. Go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, the electric bill, we've been, you guys have been talking about that. Hey, I consider that a small victory, only missing two meters after the last big, after the last misses that we've had. But I've been on, in contact with Jordan, and she's working on it. It's just the new system, it's getting better. I mean, so I hope it can't get any worse. We've also, I had met with the owner of Four State Supply, the supply company that we, that does the gym floors, and we get most of our custodial supplies from. And I was meeting, I talked with the owner about the gym floors. We have so much finish on those gym floors right now, over after years and years. We've never really maintained them. It's just been adding new finish every year. So with that being said, Mr. Charlton and Mr. Johnson have allowed me to try to polish the floors. So they allowed me to purchase a new burnisher machine specifically for that. We did a slight test run with the equipment that we have at Triway, shined them up, looked pretty good. But with the proper equipment, I think we can get by with refinishing the floors every other year or every three years. Save the district's about six thousand dollars a year by just simply trying to maintain what we have. So we're going to be polishing the floors at Gramby on Friday. And then on, on the first, we were, we coming in here to avoid conflict with basketball practice and polishing the floor at the high school. Trying to bring that shine back out.
Can still not take away any of the traction or nothing?
Actually, the main thing with Triway, I mean, it's, I mean, it's just, I mean, it's not as shiny as when you first do it, but it's got all the tack.
Yes. Yes, well-
It changes the look and the tack, without a doubt.
I, I can show you a picture of the finished product, I have one on my phone if you're curious, of Triway. But with the proper equipment and the better burnisher, like I ordered some three thousand grit diamond, diamond buffing pads, that should really help bring the shine back out. There's enough polish on, there's enough product on that floor that we should be fine. I mean, after all the years of refinishing every year, we should be fine. But this is kind of a test run, and then if Mr. Charlton and Mr. Johnson are happy with what we're doing, then they will make a determination. But they've allowed me to, to see what we can do, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about any of that curriculum related? Thank you.
And old business, none, new business?
All right, you got the audit in front of you, that's the full audit report, and I am not going to go over it, but I will kind of give you the material findings. Overall, our audit went very well, probably, you know, probably the least amount of dings we've ever had on things. You know, Jennifer and her team, they come down, and I mean, they, they help, they're very good with us. You know, when they need things fixed, they'll show us what to do, and, you know, we fix a lot of things right there. So I'll just go, kind of go over the material weaknesses right now. The one material weakness that we have, and we are always going to have this, is our segregation of duties. We have three ladies that work here, and we kind of compartmentalize as much as we can among these three. They want it more, and I just say we can't. And so I wrote a letter saying basically, you know, the size of our, the size of our school kind of prohibits us from making more segregation of duties. You know, that they would like another person added and, you know, and, you know, segregate duties even further. But that's really not possible for us, so, you know, that's, that's probably always going to be there as far as a knock. And the last one was, is, is my fault. We are required to put our expenditures and revenues on the website, so for public consumption, so you can kind of see. And I have been doing that, kind of. I did not, I've been putting our expenditures up every month. I did not really know that we were supposed to do revenues as well, so I had not been doing that at all. So that's my fault. I will start getting the revenues put up there as well, I've just been putting the bills up there and what's been going out, and I thought I was good. But I have been told I need to do revenue as well, so I'll start adding that. The only other things they added were, you know, things that we have to kind of keep in, in mind are, you know, cybersecurity, which is always, you know, a big thing, you know. Some places, you can go at home and you can work on our accounting program at home and work on things. Ours is locked up. So if, if we want to come and work on it, we're coming here. You know, Marty and Adam, they, they, they keep it locked up and everything, so we're not allowed to access that from home or anything. So anything that we're doing on our financials, we have to come here and do it. So that's, that's one good thing. And then the last thing is new accounting standards. Every year, they add new accounting codes and everything, and they're always wanting to make, making sure that we're aware. They add new things, keep a hold of Shiva and Lori and Mary, so they're, they're aware of new, any new accounting codes that are coming down. But other than that, the, the audit went very well, so. And you will, all will need to approve that, and then I have to upload that to, to Desi tonight.
Oh, okay.
No, I could do it tomorrow, but I'm not going to.
So we need a motion to-
So make a motion.
Second.
Whoever you want to write down, Chuck.
Ladies first.
Any opposed? Set it up. And then we have the first reading?
Yep, we can do either one, we can do first reading or we can do actions. I have given you this. Yeah, that's kind of a, a short, kind of a little short and sweet version of what they have. Some, some of these things, you'll be happy to know that you guys, if you want, you can change the name of the district if you want. And if nobody opposes you, it just needs to be a unanimous vote. So if you've got a birthday coming up, you can do it. But if a petition is signed by at least twenty resident voters, you can't do that. And we have to put it on the ballot, so. I, I, yeah, I did not know that either. And then it talks about sub-districts can be, and this is for bigger, much bigger places, sub-districts. Closed meeting votes, the only thing that changed on that was any records that, or activities that could have been made to the state auditor. That is also part of the closed meeting record they've added in that. This one on DF one, setting tuition for district programs, that has changed a little bit because they've added some things. It used to be, if you owned property in another district, you could send your kids there. And you still can, but they've put, put a few more restrictions on it. Still have to own the property, you have to have had ownership for at least four years now, consecutive years. You have to have paid at least two thousand dollars in taxes to that school. You have to reside in the same county. So you couldn't live in Jasper, you couldn't live in Joplin and own property here and send your kids. You have, if I lived in Seneca, yes. You can send your kids here, it has to be in the same county. You also have to give thirty days written notice, blah, blah, blah. And then you can only send up to four students. So if you had, you know, if you were the Waltons and you had eight of them and you wanted to send them all, technically you're only allowed to send four. Professional staff compensation, G C B A. This, this allows you to put different teachers on the salary schedule depending on what they teach, if you so choose. These would be hard-to-fill areas, and it, and they define it, you know. If ten percent of your certified positions were left vacant, or filled with teachers that were not certified, you could do that. Or hard-to-staff subject areas, same way. You, you could, you know, if you're like, man, we cannot find this type of teacher, and we do find one, like, we're going to move you to here if you'll agree to come here. If you met these criteria, you could legally be able to do that now. Homeschooling, all that really changed on this was one little wording, and it was called family-paced education. And these are the, these are the students or families that participate in the state's tax credit voucher program. So they just added that to homeschooling.
What does that mean?
If, really, they're homeschooling, but if they're going through that tax credit program, so they're getting money for it. So they're, they're including that as part of, you know, as part of the homeschooling piece. And then parents are, you know, and we do that. We're, we encourage parents, if you're going to go homeschool your kid, let us know so we're not, you know, calling DFS or something for educational neglect. Virtual courses, says districts can't deny enrollment just because they prefer a different program, or they don't like virtual learning. And they've kind of made it easier for students to appeal that decision. They now have thirty days to be able to do that, it used to be ten, I believe. MoCap virtual courses, that kind of shows you where all our MoCap providers are. And parents will, you know, if, if they choose to go full-time with these, they're, what they're really saying is, they're going to be going to those districts. So, you know, if they want to be part of launch, what they're really doing is they're enrolling in Springfield Public Schools. Or if they're going to the Missouri Virtual Academy, they're enrolling in Granby U R two schools. And if a provider unenrolls them, they let us know that that student, and I had just one of those yesterday. The virtual provider said they have been, weren't being academically successful, so they were going to unenroll them. And so we contacted mom and dad and said, they're unenrolling you, so you're either going to have to come back in person, or you're going to have to find another virtual provider, or homeschool, period. Compulsory and part-time attendance. And again, that family-paced education piece, which is part of the homeschooling, they've included that of, of what, of what a student can do instead of in-person attendance. Student absences and excuses, they changed the language, suspecting educational neglect to, from reasonable suspicion to reasonable cause to suspect. Don't ask me why, they're lawyers, so that's what they say. And suicide, and you're going to love this one too. On the suicide awareness and prevention, we now have to make the change because we can now print the number on either side of the match.
You guys want to wait?
I say we make a motion to approve them today.
Okay. Everybody approve that? Right, all in favor? Any opposed? Set it up.
All right. And the last one here is, Consider the resolution for calling for a special bond election to be held on April eighth, two thousand twenty-five for the safe rooms. We weren't, I'll, I'll kind of go over it a little bit with you, Sheila, because you weren't here. We kind of went over the language last week, and it was the basic language, what we talked about. And we said London A, which was proposition, safe kids. That's what we decided to call it. And Seth and I have a Zoom meeting tomorrow with them. And what, 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 what we're basically saying is, we want to go forward with a project at both locations of safe rooms. Triway, Triway's being an area that would house four classrooms inside of it. Gramby's being an area that was just a multipurpose room that we would use for storm safety. And that's, that's basically what it's going to come down to. And if you guys are good with that resolution, and then we, that will go on the April ballot.
Okay, well, I thought we were supposed to meet, and we never did.
Yeah. It, one of the reasons for that is the ongoing, Triways was, turns out to be the easiest one in the world because all of a sudden, you just, but right now, I'm, I'm working with asbestos and lead abatement now, because all the work we did getting rid of lead at Gramby on soil, which was great, well, now we have to dig down farther. Well, the- Yes, because they only went down a foot to replace topsoil, then they put a barrier down. Well, they have to go down maybe thirty-six inches. Well, that soil is still hot. So now we have to get rid of all that soil that is lead contaminated. So now I'm in, talking with the, uh, not D N R. Keep thinking, I'm talking with the EPA now on what can we do with that now that we have to do that. So that's why, that's why it's becoming more complicated on Gramby's side. Tomorrow though, once we get that done, we should have plans that we can now look at, discuss, and then we're, we're going to start talking about finishes, that's when we'll be able to start having meetings. We need to start thinking also about what we want to see as far as things getting out, not just, obviously, we're going to speak to the community, but do we want banners? Do we want to put yard signs? You know, those are the type of things that they're going to be asking, and, and those are the type of things that, you know, we need to decide, what, what do we want to see about getting out to the public?
So, but are we voting, or we vote this? I mean, is that, it's not saying exactly where each thing's going to be right now.
No, this is saying, we're going to have, we're going to put a safe room at Triway, we're going to put a safe room at Gramby. Yes. That's what it's saying.
That make a motion.
I'll say it.
All right, all in favor, or any other discussion? Set it up. Okay, so we need to make them have a motion, go into executive session.
I'll make the motion, go in executive session.
Second.
Okay, touching that, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Set it up.